We're going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by the planning board. If any other persons present are recording the meeting, you must notify the chairperson at this time. That's me today because George isn't with us. Anyone recording? And I think George mentioned this is a new thing we say at the beginning. Public comment may be allowed at the discretion of the chair. If you want to be considered for making a comment, please alert the chair by raising your hand. Now. Good everybody.
So you want me?
Have to do it. So I think we'll do two minutes of public comment per person. I'll talk about that in a minute once we get through the call to order and the meeting minutes. So let's do a roll call. Jeff Sauer, Vice Chair, acting chair, Richard Michelle, a clerk.
Tom Bledsoe, alternate voting today.
Erica Yagi, alternate.
Voting today. Yes. Okay, now let's. Okay, well, we're doing two today.
Do what?
We're doing two minutes, two minutes per person. We've already had a public hearing on this too, so this is a second chance. All right, do I have a motion to? How do we do the minutes? Yeah. Has everyone seen the minutes? Any comments on the minutes?
I thought they actually prescribed, uh, recorded what we did in the last meeting. I have no comments on them.
I'm helpless since I wasn't there. Same, voting on them, but. She can't bite the problematic.
Well, yes, because you need people to vote. I guess, well, quorum, if you don't have the vote, so that's fine.
Even, I mean, the minutes can get pushed to the next, we can't, it's not like we'd stop the meeting or something for that, so. I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2025.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
So the second to Tom?
No, I did, I only had two votes.
Well, they can vote. They can, they can motion and they can motion and second, but if they don't want to vote, they don't want to vote.
Right.
Well, if we weren't, then can you vote?
He votes to his ventures.
Yeah, so we might have to re-vote on that next time. I'm not sure. Do you think we?
I think it's fine.
Still pass it.
Yeah, we have the quorum, you know, it is a quorum and the two people stayed in the past. People, yeah, people stayed.
Okay. All right, then I will do public comment, two minutes per person. I don't have the list today, so we'll start with the people in the room and then we can go to the people on the screen. And just so everyone knows, today, the action items are exclusively the deliberation on the citizen petition, not other zoning issues that are in discussion elsewhere. And then there's an A and R. Those are the two action items for today. So it'd be helpful if you come, if you have comments to focus on what we're talking about today.
Yeah, on the petition, so comments on the petition.
Who wants to go first?
Up front, please, and up there, please.
I just want to clarify, I do not understand.
Oh, oh, oh.
Clarify.
Oh, thousand. So you can say whatever you want in your two minutes, but we would encourage you to focus on the things that are on the agenda today.
Which is good. Which is a petition, right? We're talking about the petition, the citizen petition. So if you want to comment on the citizen petition, you can comment, but if it's on ADUs, that's not what we're talking. We're not talking about ADUs.
I mean, that is the.
Well, we're talking about the citizens petition.
Regarding.
Regarding ADUs, so we're not.
Regarding ADUs.
Yes, look, it'd be most helpful to hear your position on the citizens petition, but you can say what you want during your two minutes, yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
And address.
Jackson.
Carol.
S O M, Allen Street, 29 Allen Street. And, uh, so, um, I've been following the discussion. It's been long and detailed. I appreciate your time. The city can provide a sound foundation for future development of additional dwelling units. I affirm that ADUs are desperately needed. As you know, studies of limited housing options in Franklin County and in Greenfield have acknowledged a rise in panic and frustration on the part of our aging neighbors to find adequate and accessible living quarters. I've gotten phone calls from people in other county towns saying, asking for help finding housing. Did you know that employers are interested in moving their businesses to Greenfield but are concerned that there are not sufficient places for their employees to live? Did you know that our own public school teachers, our own nursing staffs at the hospital cannot find adequate places to live in Greenfield? Did you know that our hospital hires traveling nurses to fill in the nursing staff gaps? And that traveling nurses can find a room to rent in Greenfield for a three-month period? But full-time nursing staff need more than a temporary room to rent. We should maintain our present definition of an ADU as a structure in addition to the primary dwelling. This too has worked for many years. There is no reason to change it.
Could I excuse me, spell your last name again?
L E T S O N.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For the patience. Thanks for coming.
Edie Heineman, H E I N E M A N N, 41 Garfield Street, number one. Thank you for your time and attention. Uh, I'm asking you to, your support in maintaining the proposed zoning rules for ADUs as previously proposed. I understand that there's a petition to further restrict some of these rules, even though I'm very in favor of limiting the ability of outside developers to come in and build, overbuild for their own profit with no regard to city character. I do not think the amendments brought up by these petitions will solve that problem. We need housing for all income levels. Please use your good sense and go with less restriction, keeping an eye on the goal, making it easy as possible for homeowners to shape their property in ways that can allow for additional apartments, if that is what they want to do, and not close the door on this important need. We need more housing and it can be done without sacrificing the character of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Moore Gaffic, W O R G A F T, isn't Thomas, I K. 45 Forest Avenue, Greenfield. Uh, planning board members, thank you very much for allowing me to speak and for all the work you do on this. I know this has been a long struggle. Um, as I said, my name is Susan Moore Gaffic. I live on Forest Ave, and I'm speaking for myself and the 92 other members of Housing Greenfield. Uh, so I'm going to be brief. Presently, homeowners can subsidize their existing one family to up to three apartments by right. These are not ADUs. Provision has proved to be a sound policy over time and it shouldn't be changed. We should maintain our present definition of ADU as a structure in addition to the primary dwelling. This too has worked for many years. There's no reason to change it. The federal section eight and Massachusetts residential voucher program are presently both administered by the Greenfield Housing Authority. They provide support at the level of 30% of an applicant's income for low-income renters in all kinds of buildings, single-family homes, apartments, ADUs. There is no need for a special directive on, uh, from the city on ADU residents. Um, and the Affordable Home Act requires that there be a special permit process for more than one ADU on a lot. If there's a lot that is large, let's say one acre, and already has one ADU, and the owners want to build a second, they need to go through that process. It's not useful to pre-decide that there's no need for a second ADU on that property. Uh, use the special permit process that presently exists for that purpose. Thank you for your time. We approve. Thank you for coming.
Two seconds.
Hi, Paige Hall, you need to spell that.
Okay, I'll find my.
Precinct six. Um, I have submitted written comments. I hope you all had a chance to see them. I didn't turn them into this afternoon. I apologize for the late timeframe. I'll try to summarize and skip over things other people have already said. Um, I am opposed to all of the amendments as proposed in the citizens petition. Um, I want denser housing, especially the closer downtown you get. That's how you avoid sprawl. Um, this is a planning body, and I hope that it looks at the planning needs of the Greenfield we would like to see in the future, while taking into account, you know, being respectful of what we have right now. Um, I heard someone at the hearing mention that they didn't think we had a housing problem and that they thought new people aren't moving in, so why should we build more housing? And I think this is switching the cause and effect. I think people are not moving here because there is insufficient housing. And I think if we build more housing, we have a chance of keeping our young families here, um, giving elderly a place to go, um, increasing our tax base, and, and I would encourage you to, along with what Susan was just saying about the, uh, there's a, there's a solution in, in, in search of a problem when you look at the, what to do about if there's a second ADU. I think that's going to be extremely rare. And if there is, it probably wouldn't pass. And if it can, then let it. It has to go through the same processes right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pamela Goodwin, G O O D W I N, 54 High Street. I'm also a member of Housing Greenfield. I've also been a member of system housing and planning for more than eight years. I just resigned from that. I belong to the Massachusetts Coalition for the Homeless and also Western Mass Network to End Homelessness. I've been a volunteer in the warming shelter. And I'm now on the ad hoc committee for the unhoused here. And I have also know what it's like to be unhoused. So I feel like an expert, but I am not on the planning board. I don't want to echo, um, what Susan has said because some of it I have just submitted last night to you. I want to give kudos to Councilor Mastatotorio, one, that I can pronounce his last name. Two, also, John Garrett has spent an inordinate amount of time trying to be helpful about the housing that we do need. I feel that we need all kinds of housing, high-end housing, moderate housing, affordable housing, what they call low-low income housing. And for the same reason that people complain about infrastructure and, oh, I can't afford the taxes, if we could just get some businesses in and employees feel, employers feel they can house their employees, as you have just heard people talk about, then the tax rate will be spread over, the revenue will be coming in. And that's one of the goals that I think the city has to have is to attract businesses and also deal with the housing crisis. It would be great if an elderly person could downsize and get rid of a great big house so that another family can go to that, and they're looking for places to live in a smaller area. I'm aware of people who couch surf. I'm aware that people are illegally coming into the welding in the depth of the winter. For some reason, they don't come to the warming center where we would welcome them, but, um, I'm also aware of adult children still at home, living with mom or dad or both because they cannot find a place to live, even if they're sharing an apartment with another young person.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you for your time.
And for what it's worth, when you guys send Eric notes, we get all those and I read all those too, so.
Yeah, I know, but I sent mine last night.
Still got it.
We got it.
We sent it this morning.
Yeah, this morning.
So you know, so if you do run out of time, we do get those notes and we do read them.
Yeah, because there's a, an amendment that Michael has put in, um, that has to do with his proposal.
Okay, well, that's not on our agenda, so there's still time to, well, I'm sure we'll come, we'll come to our agenda in the future, have another chance to talk. All right, who's next in the room?
I'll go with the tribe. So Pamela Kelly, 32 Spruce Street. I'm a longtime advocate for Solo. And, uh, so Spruce Street is, um, now net zero essentially. You know what that means, right?
Yeah.
Net zero fossil fuel. So I'm a little worried about the idea that you could suddenly decide to build a building that is so tall that it shades out solar systems for other people. I think that is, should be criminal, really. You can't invest like $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. I'm a senior. I live on social security and I'm down to $450 a year for expenses, electric, electricity, my heat, including my heat. So the, that really should be squashed. There should be, um, a planning board recommendation, I think, that the, um, in a neighborhood that goes solar, that it needs to be, um, considered when giving a planning board approval for the height of houses and whether or not it shades out other people's solar systems. Yes? Also, there is a lot of funding available for housing through commercial pace. So, um, we helped pass that thing. And, um, it's at, um, and, and it should be investigated because that is, uh, an excellent source of housing for, um, for money, for housing for lower income.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Jo Marie Jackson, 2 Chestnut Hill. Rents in Greenfield are too high. Homeownership is too expensive for low and moderate income people. If you have deep pockets, you can buy an upper-end house in Greenfield valued substantially below market values elsewhere. But we are trying to help create affordable housing and help first-time buyers own a home. ADUs do none of that. Constituents that we talked to are concerned about the expansion of developer deregulation. The conflict is between investor profits versus affordable housing. When ADUs first came to Greenfield a decade ago, they were about bringing families closer. Now the focus has dramatically shifted. The new state mandate has changed from in-law apartments to investor profits. The old model of ADUs has been turned upside down. ADUs no longer must be owner-occupied. They can be built by right without any notice to the neighbors or butter appeal rights. This opens the door for absentee landlords and real estate investors. Our zoning regulations now allow corporations to own up to four dwellings units by right. But we've seen no evidence that deregulation creates affordable housing. We haven't met anyone in Greenfield who wants to build more than one ADU in their backyard. Very few homeowners have the money to build even one ADU, given the high cost of construction. The people who can build more than one ADU are land speculators and real estate investment trusts. State law allows the first ADU to be protected from all local zoning. But above that, we draw the line. You heard at your April public hearing, a room full of concern.
Sorry, Jen, that's time. Two minutes.
Do I have time?
No, that's, that's two minutes. I'm sorry. You haven't seen the letters that you guys have sent us. So we've, we've read some of these comments. Thanks.
I'd like to have a period vision tonight.
Thank you. I'm reading this on behalf of Mitchell Spate, 2 Chestnut Hill. Towns like Conway and Chutesbury are proposing one ADU per lot. A member of the Conway Planning Board told us, quote, "Conway's principal dwellings may yield no more than one protected unit ADU. It doesn't provide any mechanism for additional ADUs of any type." The Greenfield Economic Development Committee minutes of its March meeting states, quote, "Concern was raised that developers view ADUs as a lucrative incentive to make large quantities of money in the smallest amount of space, and there should be a limit on the number of ADUs that could be built on a lot." In our research on ADUs, we found a study that highlighted Santa Cruz, California's award-winning ADU program. It says, quote, "No more than one ADU per lot," end quote, "is allowed." That's how you keep the focus on family, not profits. We also found a recent opinion piece in the Boston Globe, written by two citizens' coalitions in Cambridge, who warned that, quote, "Speculative investment has exacerbated the housing crisis. Developer profits have been prioritized over housing affordability," end quote. They conclude that corporate buyers, quote, "can inflate costs by adding the need for investor profits to rents. If the city truly wants to address its housing crisis, it must abandon the myth that deregulation will solve the problem," end quote. "A commitment to keep housing affordable does not mean, quote, 'a free pass for developers,'" end quote. The state, uh, the state's February housing study, A Home for Everyone, says, quote, "Landlords can dictate prices since renters have few options. Investors purchase and upgrade naturally affordable rentals and starter homes, which then become available to the income levels they formally serve."
That's two minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Are you going to be recording?
Are we do?
Yes, just that, that.
My name is Al Norman of Redell Street. Massachusetts has a housing crisis for decades. That's the conclusion of a February 2025 study called A Home for Everyone, compiled by U H L C. A housing crisis that has lasted for recent decades will not vanish in a year or two. The state says it needs to create an additional 22,000 homes per year from 2025, 2035 to meet the needs of our existing population. The state says Franklin County needs an increase of less than 2.5% growth in housing. Boston needs 10% growth, a rate four times higher than Franklin County. Greenfield has stepped up to its burden of providing affordable housing. Our 1,280 subsidized housing units is 52% of the total units in Franklin County. Nearly 15% of Greenfield's housing units are Chapter 40B affordable housing. Part of the state's solution to housing production is ADUs, which I call absentee dwelling units. E O H L C notes, "It's difficult for households at almost any income level to find housing that they can afford in the communities where they want to live. Even homeowners wishing to build an ADU may have trouble accessing the finances necessary for it." It's, the state says, "The availability of modestly priced homes and apartments is dwindling as they are acquired and upscaled by investors who sell or rent at much higher rents. Waiting lists for federal and state housing vouchers are long. First-generation homebuyers may find it impossible to buy a home given rising sale prices. The ADU regs are clear. We have the right to choose not to allow multiple ADUs on the same lot. Let's look before we leap into this market. Citizen petition number one adds one sentence to the Greenfield ADU ordinance to clarify that after a single protected unit has been built, Greenfield can draw the line on additional units after that limit. The amendment should remove, require a simple majority vote because that's how it was adopted by the city council."
Thank you, Al. That's two minutes.
Thank you for coming.
Sure, let's do it one minute next time. This is why, this is why we need planning boards that are elected.
Next. One outside?
They probably didn't mail this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Al, we, we did, I know, I personally read your comments because they were mailed to us and I think.
Everyone's right.
They're here.
We've seen them.
This is something you have not seen.
Well, send it.
Okay, can you send it to Eric?
No, I'm not going to, this one I'm not going to send to.
Okay, it's my choice, your choice.
But the two minutes, the two minutes should have been, people should have been told, we're cutting the normal rate by a third. You didn't do that. You should have.
Thank you, Al.
True.
All right.
Hello, Nancy Hazard, um, 30 Spring Terrace, and I'm with Housing Greenfield and with Greening Greenfield. So, um, I'm speaking against the citizen petition, um, for a number of reasons, but, and I think one of the issues is there appears to be some confusion about exactly what the regulation is. That was in my turn just the other day. And so as I understand it, that, uh, if you're in a single-family home or a two-family, you can have three apartments, make three apartments, uh, by, by right, and those are not ADUs. Those are just apartments. And if, ADs are defined in Greenfield to be a separate dwelling, which is either in an existing garage or, um, or outbuilding and, or a, a new one that you're building. So, um, as I, I've shared before with the board, I'm in favor of increasing housing density. Uh, I think it's ultimately an excellent thing to do, uh, housing density within the area that is serviced by city water and sewer. Um, and there are many pluses, uh, that would reduce, as people mentioned, taxes. It would reduce pressure on, uh, building on open land. It would increase downtown vibrancy and sustainability in general. More people will be able to walk and bike and, uh, and take public transit rather than having to use a car. So, um, so thank you so much and, uh, please continue. And if people want to have two, as I understand, if people want to have two ADUs on the same property, they have to seek a special permit. So that is not a by-right issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
I can't answer that question, but.
Yeah.
Okay, one.
Sorry, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Is everyone, everyone's gone at this point? Okay, onto the screen. We'll start at the left. I might go over, so Stephanie?
Hello, Stephanie DuKloes, um, 166 Chapman Street. I don't believe we should have more than one ADU on a lot. Um, but I know that there are loopholes that all developers will get around because they can go and change their deed if they have enough property and parcel it out. So regardless of what you guys put in, whether or not you want to consider the petitions or any of the efforts that any community member has made, there are loopholes and ways around it and develop, developers, they're going to find it. And, um, I was at the housing study, uh, meeting and the presentation that Jeff Saucer had, had presented to this city. Um, we don't need more low-income housing. That is a detriment to the finances of our city. So options that, that promote more tax revenue coming into our city that are actually doable because, uh, the prices of ADUs are insane. I have two friends that are looking to build them and they're trying to price them out and they're like, uh, uh, you know, it's not even worth it. So you're gonna, you're, this is an absolute mess. I can't believe you cut it down to two minutes. You guys roll in your eyes because we can see it. Maybe they can't see it from the position that you're, they're in, but we can definitely see it on the television of how you guys are reacting to the people that are taking their time in, day in, day out, to come and talk and do the research. And Jeff, your study said, "We didn't need the type of housing that's being promoted by Housing Greenfield. What we need is some dollars coming in." And if I have to give a list of credentials, like, I don't know, I'm a, I'm a tax credit specialist. I have a certified occupancy certification. Like, how many credentials do I need for somebody to listen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a way to bring the volume up a little bit?
Uh, I'm, sure.
Sorry, I just have no.
It's all the way up. So I was able to hear that, but folks want to speak up just in case.
I hate hearing you.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It is a little quiet, but I think people can hear it.
Yeah.
Uh, next on the screen, Jessa.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Jessa. I live on Frederick Road. I'm, I'm against the proposed citizens petitions. They just, they aren't well thought through and I think they could have some negative unintended consequences. I'm particularly worried about the amendment aiming to redefine an ADU as something created within a principal dwelling unit. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't an ADU within a principal dwelling unit just a duplex or a triplex? A lot of people have spoke to us already. But if you take up this redefinition and you limit an owner to one ADU per lot, you're essentially blocking small-scale multifamily buildings, the kind of which many of our neighbors already live in. And if you limit small-scale multifamily, what multifamily options are left? And the answer can't be none, right? Multifamily options are really important for our town. I am, especially our low-income neighbors and, you know, I don't think it's a burden to provide for our low-income neighbors. I'm, uh, really proud of Greenfield being a working-class town. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to be part of this community and I really want it to stay that way. That's why I'm for, um, you know, common sense zoning and also things like, you know, one day, cross your fingers, interventions in the market so we can stop speculation and keep housing affordable. Those are real solutions. Thanks.
Thank you. Hugh?
Thank you.
RD? Are you muted?
I'm muted.
Can you unmute him from there? We might be. We might be able to do it from here.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Then you hear me, yes. Okay, I am for the, uh, citizens initiative and the, the. Okay, I am for the, uh, citizens initiative and the, the, the big thing that I'm seeing is.
But I get your name and address, please.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, I'm Artie Kime. I live on Oakland Street.
Thank you.
Okay, I am for the citizens initiative. Uh, the big thing for me is, uh, don't we want low income housing? And it doesn't look like this is affordable to anyone that is not quite wealthy already. And I'm just wondering, uh, have you considered that? Why, why is this even being, uh, considered to, to, uh, allow this when the housing, the rents, the, or, or if buying them will cost so much? That, that's my only statement.
For seniors.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we had a public hearing this last month. This is bonus time to talk. Everyone here has had a chance to talk. Does anyone else on the screen want to talk before we move on to our action items? All right, closing the public comment period. Okay, so the first action item. Planning board deliberation on the following proposed zoning amendments submitted by citizen petition. Four zoning amendments on section two hundred dash fifty six accessory dwelling unit. We'll go through these one by one and I will read the suggested of the petition language and then we'll discuss and you vote on. And we're not making the zoning, we're issuing of our position, our recommendation to the council on what to do about how to vote on these. So the first one, uh, accessory, section two hundred dash fifty six accessory dwelling units is hereby further amended in subsection D accessory dwelling unit standard subpart two by adding after the words, only one accessory dwelling unit should be created within a single family house or house lot. Follow the new language. Once a single protected use A D U has been permitted on a lot pursuant to seven sixty C M R seventy one oh two definition of protected use A D U. No additional A D U shall be permitted on a lot pursuant to seven sixty C M R seventy one dash three five. Does everyone know what this is doing or what it refers to?
Yes, it's getting rid of the special permit for the second A D U thing. We, we were allowing a second. Hey, your first one was protected, but anything after that required going to the special permit board. This gets rid of it and just limits it to one A D U period the end.
Correct.
Which I oppose. I mean, people should be able to do what they want with their property. Yeah, we have ordinances in place. We have the special permit in place. You know, if they want to build more than two, you know, one or two in their property, there's a mechanism for the citizens to speak again and address it, that's, that's special permit for. I don't think we should. If the issue in town is housing, we need to make housing as easy to, to build as possible. And this whole thing with investors, there's outside people coming and buying and creating it. I, I don't buy that. Uh, I don't think they are too expensive either. I've been looking at putting one on my property and I can find a modular home for about forty five or fifty thousand dollars. It's nine hundred square feet. So I think that's malarkey as well. So, and I, I don't think we should, I think the way we have it worded with the special permit after the first one is fine. Just leave it. Okay?
I would add the dimensional regulations are, offer a lot of constraints by neighborhood by zoning. It's what people are used to. And I think that also controls this coverage limitations, there's setbacks, there's height, there's. Just to one of the comments about solar shading, I don't see the, I don't know if that was.
That was sort of hot building height.
I know, it's another thing, but I don't see it being an issue for A D Us because of the size limitation.
Yeah.
They're looking at nine hundred square feet and two stories, that's twenty by twenty with setbacks, you're not going to have shading. So I just wanted to add that, clarify in case anybody was concerned about that. Unintentionally concerned about that. So, and, and I think our special permit process is very rigorous and good.
I agree.
And I've, I've been through it. For, for, uh, other people, I'm an architect and general contractor and I've been through this with other people. And the special permit will stop something that doesn't make sense. So I.
I agree.
I think it, especially on lots that are nonconforming and, and you'll, you'll have to really prove why you have to do it. So anyway, I think we have a good, uh, zoning bylaw in place already that will keep things in line to the intent of this A D U.
Yeah, I agree.
I feel similarly. Um, I mean, I think the biggest challenge with A D Us have been their underutilization. So, I mean, I'm supportive of making it as a right to encourage it. And I think the special permit process will, will take care of, uh, you know, any, um, sort of circumstances where a second one might be appropriate. I don't see that happening very often. Frankly, this whole discussion feels like something that won't materialize and we spend a lot of time on it. So I appreciate the concerns about it. I share concerns about outside investors. I would like to see Greenfield grow in a sustainable way without, uh, gentrification, but we do need to grow. And we need more housing and I think this is a small part of the solution, but there's no reason to restrict it. So I, I don't support frankly, any of these recommendations. I think the one that made sense, we've already incorporated, which is to, uh, pro- prohibit, uh, short term rentals. So that was a good suggestion. We incorporated it. I think we've discussed these issues and I'm comfortable with the ordinance that we've already recommended.
Okay. Yeah, I feel the same way. If two makes sense, then we should have two. Oh, and that's what the special permits for, to sort that out. But we got small lots, big lots. On big lots, it might make total sense to have multiple A D Us and I also think people forget about all the dimensional constraints where you're not just gonna have a, the mini miniature city of buildings on a lot. There's all sorts of setbacks. That, that does a lot of work towards maintaining the character of the neighborhoods that we live in already.
Plus there are wetlands that snake through a lot of properties and neighborhoods in Greenfield that also create additional constraints that, um, you know, are taken into consideration. But the other thing, I mean, this is not directly to that, um, ad- addendum to the article, but I've been riding up and down neighborhoods in Greenfield the past couple of weeks and there are so many architecturally beautiful abandoned garages that to me, that's why you have that A D U because, you know, a lot of people, they, they turn their house into a three family unit, they rent it and the garage just is forgotten because you can't obviously have one garage for one tenant when the others don't have it, et cetera. This is for me, a perfect example of how you could apply that this A D U regulation now and say, hey, I've got this garage. I can very easily convert it into an A D U. I keep the character of my lot. I salvage this building. You know, I mean, there's so many pluses to that rather than an abandoned dilapidated, you know, mouse infested garage could be turned into A D U very easily.
And how much?
And there are many of those around.
And if you want to develop a unit as cheap as possible.
That's the way to do.
Do you buy a lot and build something new from scratch or do you?
No.
Innovate an existing structure and insert a unit into that?
Renovate an existing structure.
If we have them, we, yeah, exactly.
And with the garage, it's easy to, rather than building another structure and having to create a whole new sewer connection into the street, you could usually these, there are a lot of basements in Greenfield, you could tie from there right into the existing sewer main and you reduce your cost maintenance. You're not tearing up everything.
There's a lot of rehabilitation needs of our single family stock. So I mean, this is one small way potentially to address that. I think we need to do more to, I mean, really a homeowner rehab programs. It, it feels like when we get to the planning discussion, we can talk more about kind of housing needs we have, but I do think we have a lot of housing rehabilitation needs around the single family stock. This could help, but you know, it's, there, there's a way bigger needs than, than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we want to talk about financing, then start thinking outside of the box. I don't know if everyone's familiar with the heat loan program. I was just thinking, wow, wow, what if we had something for A D Us where you set constraints either on occupied or something like that, but somebody who's retired who has a house, who wants to put an A D U either for a family member or for a little extra income, but they can't afford it because they're on retirement income. That's just can't. What if we had like a low interest, zero interest program that said, okay, we'll, we'll support that. And you can build the A D U and, you know, you have, you have that extra housing. And that would be a great thing for the state to do, or even we could try it in Greenfield out of town. It's, I think it's more profitable and long-term more, um, economically, uh, what I want to say. Not sustainable, but it, it's better to actually, rather than have a section eight voucher that just moves around, doesn't create any housing opportunities, but have something like that when you're creating something new and everybody's benefiting from it.
Or do you both? So, or do you both?
Yeah, I do both, yeah.
I, I agree.
I do both, exactly.
If you can.
Either way, but. It is costly. It is costly, but if you have something already there, work with it.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be throwing away perfectly good buildings, especially when they're architecturally integrated already into the neighborhood and look great. They just need to not be boarded up and need to be occupied.
Great. Any other discussion on this one? We'll, we'll be able to talk about some of these issues again as we go through these motion to to vote a certain different way. Give me a motion.
On each individual.
Yeah, we do one by one. Yeah.
I make a motion to, uh, I don't know what's a motion. Just take a vote.
I feel like it's issue a negative recommendation to the council.
Issue a negative recommendation to the council on amendment one.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, none? Thank you. All right, on to number two. And maybe I'm supposed to read the top part too. It's another comment. We, the undersigned registered voters of the city of Greenfield pursuant to the provisions of chapter forty A, section five, paragraph one, the master general laws, do hereby petition that chapter two hundred zoning of Green, zoning of Greenfield be amended as follows. Section two hundred dash fifty six accessory dwelling units is hereby further amended in subsection D accessory dwelling unit standard subpart two by adding at the end thereof the following new language. An A D U created with, within a principal dwelling unit shall be considered one A D U on a lot for the purposes of this section.
Now, this is the one that interferes with the by right for the residents to already build inside their residences and that's just, that's not considered an A D U. All right, then that was, that's just, that was that whole thing.
Right.
About if you have a primary home and you want to cut it in half and make two homes inside of it, that's, you have the right to do that and it's not considered an A D U. This is trying to change that to where that is now considered.
That's not how I read it.
How do you read it?
If you call it an A D U, then it's an A D U. If you don't call it an A D U, it's a unit. I mean, it's a semantic question from the city's perspective. So I don't see what this adds. It's just, it's redundant in my opinion.
I thought that was the intent of.
Perhaps, but that's not.
The intent was, what's the implication of it?
I don't think there is one. I mean, if you, if you declare that a new unit you built inside your house is an A D U, that's your A D U.
But that means that you can't then build one. You don't have a protected right to build one off your, uh, attached one.
You don't have a. What it's saying, but you could just not call it an A D U and call it a duplex and then you could still build.
An idiot, right.
But the semantic, in Greenfield, it's a semantic question. Other places it might be different. But we already allow three units by right. So to me, it's adding, it's not adding anything helpful. It's just confusing to me. Any other thoughts on this one?
Can I just say it again?
Yeah.
Cause I'm not. You know, I.
I don't think it adds thirty to our, it's off the code. No.
Doesn't make, yeah. I think the intent was to probably make a duplex be reconsidered as a unit, maybe. I think it does that and I also wouldn't want that to be the case anyway.
Lost the intent, but you have an answer to that, but you're not looking for.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Want to, want to make a motion to issue a recommendation?
Motion to forward a negative recommendation for amendment two to the, to this council.
And a second?
Second.
Yeah, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number three. We, the undersigned registered voters of the city of Greenfield pursuant to the provisions of chapter forty A, section five, paragraph one of the master general law, do hereby petition that chapter two hundred zoning of Greenfield be amended as follows. Section two hundred dash fifty six accessory dwelling units is hereby further amended in subsection D accessory dwelling unit standards by adding after subpart ten, the following new subpart eleven. Eleven, in order to enable the development of housing units for low income individuals, the Greenfield Housing Authority shall provide deep restrictive rental housing vouchers to the extent they are available to low, low income households that limit their share of rent costs not to exceed thirty percent of their income as determined by the Greenfield Housing Authority. Thoughts on this one?
I don't, I don't understand just now, so.
I don't think that relates to our zoning bylaws and it's not in our purview. And we have a system in place that works. I don't, I don't see how this changes in either direction.
I, I feel similarly, whether it's a good idea or not, there's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of priorities for section eight, whether this should be a priority is a, you know, there's a question for probably other bodies, not the planning board. Uh, and it's not a zoning matter. So I don't see that it's really pertinent.
I agree.
And we have no control over those funds, so.
Yeah, this isn't what zoning is for. But it is something that could be explored by the bodies, for sure.
I would make a motion to give a, a negative recommendation to council.
Have a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number four. I'll just read the substance of the amendment this time. It's the same intro. Section two hundred dash fifty six accessory dwelling units is hereby further amended in subsection C applicability by adding at the end of subpart two, the following new language, any A D U on a lot which is not protected use, not a protected use A D U as defined in section two hundred dash fifty six B of this ordinance shall be subject to a special permit pursuant to seven sixty C M R seventy one dash oh three five for the use of land or structures for the additional A D Us. Any A D U use which requires a special permit shall require a site plan review by the planning board prior to construction pursuant to section two hundred dash eight dot four B one of this ordinance and in conformance with seven sixty C M R seventy one oh three three B five.
Those are exist, our existing special permit people already require the site plan. Okay, so we've already put in our requirement that anything outside of the first one requires a special permit. So we're already covering what that's saying, or is it saying something different?
It it reads like desiring another layer of oversight over A D Us on top of special permit, whether or not that's already there. I, I don't think it's helpful to me.
Well, like I said, a special permit requires a site plan review. That's just part of the special permitting process and we're requiring any A D U after the first one to go through the special permit process.
Right.
So we're covering that in our existing order, so essentially already incorporated in our recommendation.
Yeah.
Our, our existing ordinance already covers that, as far as I understand.
And, and I just want to point out something. If we have concerns with out of town developers, that is not a hindrance to them. An out of town developer has a good attorney who will come and make anything pass or argue very strong in favor of that developer. But your local citizen property owner who wants to put an A D U is not going to want to spend the extra money to hire an attorney, bring them in to lobby and go through the whole special permit process. That costs a lot of money for people. And, and why, why add that burden? Because it's going to have the opposite effect of what we're trying to avoid, which is out of town developers. You can afford that, that, that's not a hurdle for them. They do it all the time.
Yep.
But local, my, my neighbor next door who wants to do this, they, they can't afford all those extra costs, going through a special permit of publishing, advertising, the plans, et cetera. They, that's just an extra hurdle that is unnecessary for one A D U to convert your garage. That's, that's my take on it. So I would, I would be against that. Because it is onerous.
Yeah, I'm extremely skeptical of the suggestion that developers will come in and flood the market with speculative A D Us. But while we were speaking, I was doing some research in the, the median, the average asking rent in Cambridge, Mass, which is one of the cities we talked about, heard about earlier today is thirty three hundred dollars a month. That's a market you might expect some speculation because you can actually get a return on your investment. Greenfield's is a third of that, at least according to the CoStar source I was looking at here. Greenfield rent doesn't support speculative investment at that level like you might see in Santa Cruz or Cambridge. Those are completely different markets. If that became a big problem here, we could react to that, but, but as, as Counselor Gordon said at the, the public hearing, we've heard a lot of speculation that that could be, that could happen. It's kind of a coherent scenario, but it's not a plausible one. I mean, that's not a probable cohe- uh, scenario, in my opinion. So until we see evidence that that's a real problem, I don't think we try to solve for that.
And if it really becomes a problem, can. And if it really becomes a problem, can always write a new zoning bylaw, you can control that, I mean, that's what zoning is all about.
Correct.
Shaping growth. Or restricting growth.
Motion.
Motion? Am I allowed to make motions?
Why not?
Okay. I will make a motion to issue a negative recommendation to citizens petition. Item four.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Finally. All right, the next action item is a approval not required. In our plan endorsement for lots at accessories tax map R zero four lot fifty three committed by Mark A. Leonard. I don't have that printed, but I'll look at it. And we have, so this is a really crazy looking plan.
I got our time.
Well, it's because of wetlands over here.
What they.
I see.
We go, we go.
Is Mark here or somebody representing?
No, he, Mark sent me a note.
Okay.
Mark sent a note to George, who sent the note to me, just to give us a little bit of context as to what they were trying to solve for here.
Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Frontage, I think minimum frontage for a lot.
Yeah, lots, I guess.
Yeah, lots as a.
Well, the stated reason for it. It's.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the stated reason for this.
You're muted, Jeff. We can't hear you. I think your microphone is on red.
Oh, there, I got it.
You got it? I might have, I might have just touched this by accident, okay.
All right, it was recent, I think it was, I'll reread what the justification for this, just so it's on the record. So, to explain this A and R geometry. Um, Eric sent us a note that said that he spoke with Mark Leonard. Submitted this plan, he stated the purpose of the lot layout is for solar energy. There's a transmission line that crosses the property, so the lots are laid out for southern exposure for solar PV. He stated that it is his intent to develop solar for every lot so that their energy is self sufficient.
How big are the lots?
Twenty three thousand twenty one, they're.
So they're buildable lots?
Yeah.
So he's gonna put.
Athenate.
He's building it for ground mounted solar, he designing the lots with his ground mounted solar, he just kind of it up.
So each lot would have. I guess, I, I, I didn't realize there was a right of way here, but that makes sense then, so each lot here would then have the ability to put.
Oh, on their little tag, you're all flag lots.
Yeah, these are all, they're all part, well, every, every lot here that has frontage has a section in the back, because you can't build on this anyway. Cause it's the utility easement, but.
But you can put a solar array under anything?
You can put the solar on, if that's what he's trying to do.
So that's a solar, that's a lot for each owner?
It's part of each owner's lot.
I see.
So that, that, this is actually a.
Flag lot, yeah.
This is the typical subdivision move where you, you, you make these lots on the frontage and then you carry things over. A lot of times it's done for wetlands, other times it's done for solar, so.
Yeah.
It's a typical move, so everybody has.
A little piece.
Their piece in the back and their piece on the side.
I, I remember seeing this, did you see this before, a different proposal for this thing?
Different proposal.
There was a different proposal, I don't, I can't remember what it was.
There was a multifamily proposal at one point, I mean. The, the real reason for this, in my opinion, is to get the necessary lot size.
Right.
Cause they're a.
Well, we have to with the zoning.
Yeah, so.
That's required.
If you want to say it's for solar, fine, but. And, and they, and they can't, so if they want to get a lot that big, but you have, they're, they're just trying to get the, the density they're allowed to on a parcel that has an.
A bit of wetlands, yeah, I've got a wetlands piece on, so they're trying to.
That's a power line.
This is a power line, I, I.
What's, what's there now?
There's a wetlands here, I thought there was.
Shopping shop, there's. Not much.
It's empty.
Is, is it empty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not developed.
That one of our industrial sites though, but I thought we had just gotten that, didn't get that to zone for an industrial. It was up that way, near there. No, I thought that was the one across from Stop and Shop. But it'll be where the. Came up or Walmart was.
Not that spot, it's near, in that direction.
In that direction, but it's not that spot, right, okay. Is that where all the, um. Those small little houses are, structures, kind of outbuildings.
It's in semi residential, it's the semi residential zone, if I'm not mistaken, right, right here. It's right in here.
It's up where all the sheds are across from.
Yeah, it's up by the sheds, it's north of the sheds.
Okay, I know where you're. I have no objection, that's what he's trying to do.
You had an objection, it wouldn't matter, because it's an A and R.
That's right.
We don't have the like. What are the grounds for not? Require, for our approval, which is not required for being denied? Where there are none, my understanding is, so we, we. If we choose to, we issue an endorsement, that's as much as we can do.
Yeah.
You maybe could like not issue anything, just be silent on it?
I think the, the trail is behind, the Mohawk Trail is back here, that's where it is. I think that's what it. I'm just trying to see. And there, and it is, it is.
Because this, this trap is right here, because that's the transmission line.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's it right there, and that's the, that's, yeah, that's it. But, but it also, it also is wet up right here.
My understanding is, after twenty one days, no matter what anybody does, they can proceed. If we wanted to be a stick in the mud, we could just say, we don't like this, or we're gonna like cost them twenty one days. My experience, in my experience on the board, which isn't that one, we haven't ever not.
No, yeah, yes.
Has Mark, has Mark gonna develop the lots, do you know, or is he gonna sell them?
That I don't know.
Okay, well, anyway, it's buildable lots. We need, we need house.
We need more housing, sure, that's probably me.
Maximizing the density possible on the site, this is the only way to get the most units you could get, if you're doing single family detached.
Yeah. Which is what that is.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I think, yeah, you could do, you could do some clusters, you know, some multifamily blocks, but. There's a cost to that too, with the sprinklers and all that's required, I mean, you could do duplexes, I don't, well, actually, he can do duplexes on here if he wanted to.
That's a good point.
Size. Somebody could do duplexes, half an acre, you have enough length.
Mm-hmm, that's good.
Yeah, you need ten thousand.
At plus an eighty.
Maybe add on the flag lot.
Yeah. But yeah, you could.
All right, that's what we do.
So.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R and want to allow you to.
So, it's two, two motions, the first is someone needs to make a motion to endorse the A and R.
Okay. I make a motion to endorse the A and R. And I'll second that.
Right, I'll, discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I also make a motion to allow the vice president of the vice chair to sign for.
G force. Normally, we don't have to go to the office, Sarah, because what we typically do is designate the chair and just do that on behalf of everyone else.
You know, it would be great, now, I'm being a designer, I should.
I'll second that.
It would be great to have a shared, shared driveway and access from here instead of, they're two busy streets.
Yeah, and this is a, I'll pull it up so we can get a vote on that, second motion. Uh, all in favor?
Shouldn't be one again.
Hmm.
So we've just voted on, that was to.
That was to give you the authority.
Erica, this is.
Less curb cuts and.
Would you, it's taking too much space away, though?
Hill Road is not a. Significant street, but it would be.
No, but this, this one is.
For sure, yeah, so, so.
Just coming in here for the history and.
That would make sense.
Yeah, well, the French King Highway ones would not be felt great.
That's correct.
Is King Road or Bible Road two?
No, stubs right in the roof too.
Okay. Act the night. Okay.
That requires, you know, shared agreement, maintenance, blah, 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 it's going again. So I can, I can totally understand why that was done, as the solar thinks a new twist.
Yeah. Whatever.
They will add a table the next.
Good thinking, or birthday design, whoever proposed it.
All right, so a few more items, so last time we talked about. So Nancy, we, we started talking about the master plan update. And we assigned ourselves. The. Vision, goals and strategies of the natural, historic and cultural resources chapter. And we were gonna, economic development chapter next. The one concern about skipping, like, kind of moving all the way through the first one, is I know that both Sarah and George really wanted to participate in that conversation. So maybe we let those go stay on the agenda for next time.
For the division ones, yeah.
Yeah, so, so maybe.
Natural history and for land use.
Yeah.
We're doing this, that, we're doing this the first one.
We were gonna go through a chapter a month. And so what, what I would suggest is that we don't close the book on natural, historic. And cultural resources, we can talk about it, but give them a chance to weigh into when they're back next time.
I have a question about the natural resources. Notably, the wetlands and the. Well, pools, I saw there was mentioned, I was tweeting too, we identified some bramble pools. Has anybody done a more, um. Microscopic look at other bramble pools that exist that are not already called out, do you know news? Am I allowed to ask Nancy a question? Do you know about that?
I know that Pat Turcito and Alzaro looked. Pretty deeply, you know, their whole year of the run. That's.
Right. Okay. Because there's a couple behind me. I look at every year, and, um, there's a whole wetlands. Area that runs parallel to Main Street, that kind of bisects, and then it, it all dumps into the Green River, eventually, there's a spillway there right off. You can see it when you're on Colrain Street, right after Elm, you see that on the left, but that whole upper part there, it's a huge watershed. I mean, huge, it's not big, but, and I know, because I built my house right next to that, and when I was digging. I hit a clay pipe that was draining that. So, and that is running year round, and I'm looking at these bramble pools every spring, they're out there now, even when we had the drought. Last year, it was wet, so there are other areas that. It would be interesting for, you know, neighbors to say, yeah, this is always wet here, and this is, to do a little, little bit of citizens mapping and identify those other things. So.
I live in one.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of people can say that, we all know where the water is around here. Yeah, me too. Yeah, it's everywhere.
Look at all the dinner and streets, there's a reason.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and you look at the geography, you can see.
Not just the road, it's the, it's the wet.
It's, no, there's wet, you can see.
Everywhere.
If you go to the USGS site, um, you can get the topo layers. They're not like one foot scale, but they're big enough that you can see all the old, you know, the drainage for this flat greenfield area, and. People know when they're living next to one of those catchment areas.
I was interested in the Highland Pond. You know, reclamation. Living nearby there, and sort of walked by and seeing that a lot, like, it's long history here in town. Though, it was interesting that there was no votes for, to try to return it as an ice skating. Feature, which understandable since it's, it's not very cold anymore.
Yeah.
That's probably not its future, that was its past for a while. But doing something with that, so it's not just a. You know, an algae.
Right.
Kind of cesspool.
Which is what, yeah, a lot of these are turning into in the summer.
Um, so I don't know, it's, it was actually when I was at the warming center and volunteering. I was talking to the police officer who was there, Dan, he's a guy who Dad used to own a, a store right on Mill Street. Um, I think it was Mill, but anyway, hardware store, but, uh, he was saying he was real interested in being able to do something to try to fix that reclaim it. And I know Phil Elmer, who lives on our street, was interested in that. So.
Oh, it's on the list.
Yeah, it's on the list, it's great.
It's just a shame for it to be kind of what it's like now.
I, I also wonder, so they've now got a grant from FEMA to buy the old trailer park, you might not know.
No.
So Colrain Road, there was a trailer park right next to the Green River, so between Elm Street and Greenfield Gardens, do you know that?
I know that, Eric.
Okay, so right on the left there, it's now the quote unquote unofficial dog park.
That's not just, right now, it's just a big field there.
It's a big field.
That used to be a, um.
Trailer park.
Trailer park. Trailer park, so you can still see the paving from the old roads that, the trailers. So what's interesting there, because it's empty, it's unused, we're not allowed to build anything per the FEMA agreement with the funding, because it's a. It's a, yeah, it's a flood plain, but it would be a great place for community gardens, just for people to plant. Because, you know, Greenfield Gardens folks, they have no place to plant there, and people could just plant their vegetables, it, it doesn't flood every year. But obviously be at your own risk, but it might be a nice use of that. Right now, of course, it is a dog park, and it's also for people who come with these big bruiser trucks and they. Spin around in the mud or in the snow and tear up the place, you can see the tracks, they're there all the time, usually come around nine thirty at night or ten o'clock at night. And tear up the place, and I would love to see that stop because it's not good. For that, for that soil, because it's just disrupting the soil, which is then washing off the river, so it's creating erosion, it's not a good thing. Um, but, anyway, that, it's just a thought I had, and I don't know, Nancy, if that's something. That we could do with a site like that, but we don't, do we have any community gardens anywhere in Greenfield that you know about, we do?
Yeah, there are, um, two, actually, one's Pleasant Street, one where the John Saw Community Center is behind that.
Oh, right, yeah, of course, that one I know about, yes.
And the other place is it, it's just roots.
Oh, just roots, okay.
So, but, but back to that location, that location is, the conservation commission oversees it.
Okay.
And, right, presently, or last year, the city applied for, um, an MVP, multiple. Municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, uh, to start doing some renovation and on that and receive some money. So, and actually, next week, it's, there's beginning, or even today, it sort of started happening. Uh, uh, plants, the goal is to plant, uh, seven hundred trees and shrubs on the slope and, and down.
Yeah, that would be great.
As a start, it's just, it's two acres of this nine or twelve acre lot.
Right.
Uh, spot, so.
Erosion resistance.
The other.
Protects the road.
So, there's other people have been talking about it, I think it'd be great to continue that conversation and try to figure out, you know, what, what, you know. I, I had been thinking that it was, um, you could do some, uh, flood mitigation there.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure, in talking to, um, committee with the, it's like the Furco, and. That apparently there needs to be some much study done in order to assess all of the flood mitigation possibilities on the Green River. Before you kind of focus down on what.
Right.
So, of which, it's, it's.
Yeah, the FEMA, the FEMA agreement's pretty clear.
Yeah, that's.
They, you know, water needs to be able to flow. So no structures, and I, like, the trees, yeah, you can plant them on the hillside, but not.
I believe you could plant them on the flat as well.
Really?
But, um, personally, I wanted to know whether, if you were gonna use the site for more flood mitigation, you would, you would probably be moving soils. And therefore, I don't, I'm personally, you know, just, this is just me.
Hmm.
I, I, you know, before. Planting a forest there is a decision, you know, I'd love to have it assessed, to see whether it has another use, has an additional use, maybe a combination of those.
Right, right.
But, yeah.
So you mean like reinforcing the way by removing soil?
Oh, yeah, I think we should talk about it, Nancy, to, to be here with us.
Doing field trips.
Since I were talking about. We're talking about.
Right.
So I'd be happy to.
Right.
Um, I think.
Okay, I know, I know what you're talking about.
I'm making sure that what's being discussed is in law.
Oh, okay.
We can make it together.
Okay, I didn't.
Okay.
So, th- there's another group who's interested in water, in stuff, in open space, that. Should get that session. But, yes. He, he's lit.
It's huge.
My sense is that, that's, this topic is, is in the list. Pretty good, like, there's one item, coordinate tree planting efforts by the city and volunteer groups in ways that are strategic and sustainable, that's exactly what's gonna be happening at that site.
Definitely, right.
For the next three. For the next three weekends, I believe, because all my neighbors are involved in that.
Trees will be planted in that timeframe.
Oh, right there, really?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
The first three Saturdays.
Nice.
Nine thirty to twelve thirty.
Nice. I'll come bring a shovel, get it in. When, when you did it?
Next three Saturday.
Next three Saturdays, okay.
Is there? In this section, something I'm just missing it or. We referred to the dam at Highland Pond. Something that could be removed, I guess, to. That be a forever again.
People are just wanting to know more about it, look at it, make decisions, have discussions.
What happens if that went away? If that dam went away?
Well, I assume that that whole area was dug out to begin with. So. You know, it would revert to.
Just wondering where the water would go.
Oh, well, actually, the water goes by my house.
In the basement.
But which way is it flowing?
The waters are at that, it is that pond. So I'm aware of that and.
So it's flowing towards the Connecticut from.
It, it flow, it, it flows into, um. It's called Graves Brook and then flows into Millers. I'm sorry, Maple Brook. And then it's underground almost all the way and it comes out at Miller's better where we've been talking and empties into the Green River.
Oh, wow, goes that way.
It, it's the major, yeah, drainage system in Greenfield.
Subsurface drainage, like many towns have, yeah. They're all over Massachusetts, it's a wet state, that's going to change.
Is, does the master plan take a position on the dams on the Green River?
That's, there, there's some, the Canadian Conservancy has some grant applications out. To remove one and to lower the other.
Yeah.
Waiting for money.
Yeah, do we, do we make that something, I guess, do we take a position in the, in the master plan? Now that's a contentious. But some people think there's historic significance and they should be kept, others think there's ecological.
Did the planning board take a position on the dam removal?
Oh, we have.
If it's the dam by the Green River Recreation Area, it's pretty historic.
So I think finally, yeah, there's an agreement.
It's moving out.
Let's see it, yeah, move. And one of them can't be removed because of the infrastructure that the city has on it.
Yeah, okay.
The idea of lowering it, but protecting the infrastructure.
Right.
And acknowledging the history of that other dam would have to be.
The thing that I feel would be really valuable is to integrate the. And the restoration of the ecological systems with. Recreational networks. We're going to invest in the river, make that part of the bike path and, and have those be contiguous. I'm sure that comes up in the recreation section too, but if you get money for something, you might as well do double duty with it if you can. And that's great for people's mobility, for recreation, for kids riding their bikes to school and property values.
It was a great study done in two thousand and seven, I believe. Uh, the, it's, it's probably reps to it here. Um, and it, it would cost a lot of money and it's never been able to move forward, but. It's still there as a historical document to look at. That whole river vision that was called.
Yeah, okay. Would be cool. So that's, I, I think as we go through these chapters, that's something I'll be looking forward to, make sure we emphasize that kind of idea.
Perhaps I misunderstood our mission here, because I was looking at the, the basic highlights, the goals more than anything else and making sure. That we agree, I thought we were supposed to look at we agreed with these things and such as that. So like for the first one, uh, I added language to it because it seems very one sided. It's, it's focusing on open space, but it's good, it's focusing on open space, but it shouldn't be the only thing. So like where it says, um. Establish a standing open space committee for the purpose of prioritizing guiding land protection. Implementing Greenfield Open Space and Protection Plan. While recognizing the community needs to develop residential, commercial and industrial resources. And need to support the community, needed to support, support the community economy. So I, I just don't want to be like, they're only adding one focus, you know. My concern is, and this is country of history, I lived in Jersey and they started an open space committee. And the first, and the first thing I thought of was they're going to try and take land off the tax rolls. They're going to try and grab more space and take it off the tax rolls. So I got on the committee and, you know, it was very interesting, very enlightening, that's where I came with that idea that. Five percent open space in a community was considered good, ten percent is great. I think Greenfield right now is like forty seven percent. So it's not that we have to protect more open space, I just wanted to make sure that when the committee is looking at their things, they're looking at the whole picture. If I, if we take this land, how does it affect residents, commercial, economic impact on the town? So I was just adding language, I don't know if that was the intent of our mission, I thought that was the intent of. Yeah, like for the first one, I wanted to add that, and for the one about farming. That conserve Greenfield's agricultural land, support its farming community and develop its status as a food hub. Being mindful of the changing demographics as well as changing economic needs. Because somebody may not want to keep their farm, they may be done with it and they want to get rid of it. Are we going to try and maintain it as a farm? Is that?
Well, there's a great example, one thing that you can do. So Myers Farm next to GCC, so that belonged to the Myers family and they wanted to sell it. And a developer who believes in keeping open space and clustering development. Purchased that and that's exactly what they did. So they put the bulk of that land into farmland conservation, they built. Um, half of the condos that were planned, they're up, they, I wish they would have built the others because we could use them, but the plan is still there. Um, and then the three year charter school was on the other part and they protected the barn.
And I think it's a great idea.
And that, that it addressed, you know, the concerns that we all have, are we stopping development? But at the same time, it protected farmland.
Sure, yeah, we are.
Between you.
Plus development, so we, we've already gone, I was more concerned we were going to try and, try and force the issue. In other words, if a farmer was looking to get rid of his farm somehow or another, we were going to get involved and try and keep it as a farm. You know, it was, that we were going to keep it as a farm, when it may not be violent anymore, it may not be. You know, we may not need that farm, I don't even know what the farmer is doing, do they actually sell their produce here in town? There's, I always.
There are a lot of young farmers looking for land too, in, in the Northeast.
But I just wanted to make sure that when we, when we're looking at things, it's balanced, it's a balanced view. It's not just, we have to protect open space, we have to protect open space and. He'd be mindful of what the community needs to do, how it's developing, how it's growing. And, and match those two, that was, that's what I was thinking, so those are the two suggestions we had.
Some of those ideas are in there, if you get all the way down to the. Implementation action level. Where. Working with, so I mean, if a farmer wants to get out of their. And you want them to be able to cash out, so to speak, so they get their equity. But if there's a farmer who would take it over, you know, a land trust, farmland trust can help convey it to another farmer, so it stays a working farm, but the farmer who is retiring. Can get their nest egg back out of it.
That's fine, yeah, like I said, I'm not saying get rid of the farm, I'm saying, let's just make it the only priority, keep the farm. Maybe time for something to go, time for something to come.
Yep, definitely, I, I, I appreciate the, the idea that there's a balance between, you know, open space or land preservation and housing development, for example. I'm working in Stowe, Vermont right now, and there's a kind of an unspoken tension between, there's been a lot of property. Uh, preservation, it's a tax write-off, there's a lot of reasons to do it. But they've preserved too much and there's, there's almost nothing left to build housing, they desperately need more housing too. So it's good to preserve it where it doesn't make sense for something else, but don't. Don't be too myopic in your ideology that you're, you're not taking a balanced approach. So I think this should all be kind of balanced and. I mean, the, the goal and the purpose of this chapter is to think about natural systems and resources, but it should still. Acknowledge that the world's more complicated.
So in some parts of the world, they're going as far as figuring out how many acres per citizen are required to feed them. And yeah, I'll give the example, Switzerland, where they changed the master plan and they required now each canton to have. Enough open space to have food, to grow food. For the citizens and they're going up, they're requiring increased height. Because a lot of these cities and towns have height limitations, the zonings are, you know, form based zonings, five story. Ground for retail, commercial and residential, they're like, oh, now you got to go up because.
And then you're putting more people out, so you need to land.
Eating, taking up too much land and we got to preserve that land for food. Because there's a history during the war.
They're better at Europe.
You had the quote unquote potato vacations because all the city parks.
Again, if you're saying, you know, saying you need an acre.
It would get off to harvest potatoes in October, that would feed the people during the war. It's a, it's a big thing, that holiday still exists, potato holiday. And it was so the kids can help their families. Harvest the potatoes out of the city parks, which were all turned into planning mills. So it's another way to look at, not saying it's what we need, but.
One benefit we have is there isn't. A direct conflict between where the land is, you might want to preserve, where the land is that would make the most sense for housing. Some communities like Stowe have preserved land that's. Stones grow from the village center and so that's where you'd want to put housing, so there's an obvious conflict there.
That makes sense.
We don't really have that here.
That's why the ADUs are great, because you've got a site that's already developed and you're.
All right.
Increasing density, you're, that's the most sustainable type of development when you have an. Or garage.
When you guys talk about this section, do you? See a conflict between housing development and? Open space preservation?
I don't personally, yeah. And that's why, while I spoke earlier, that I'm, I'm increasing the density of housing. So take the land that we've already got, build the, take the land where we already have the water and sewer system, it's already there. And let's build it, make it so more people can be accommodated rather than. I love, I'm curious, Erica, about your, your example of how they've been assessing, how much land do you need per person in order to feed them?
There are numbers out there.
Yeah, I love to, yeah, I, I don't know who's assessing them, but that's, that's good. I mean, like in the Northeast, the only, the number that I know is ten percent of our food that we consume comes from the Northeast.
Yeah.
So if there's any disruption. We're in trouble.
Yeah, and we're going to see that now with the tariffs, with all the food that we import. People are going to see that. And it's interesting because in Canada, I, I go to Quebec a lot, that's where my, half of my family is from. And there's a whole boreal cuisine movement and boreal food where anything that you make is from. Food and resources that are from the land, you're not importing. So they have an alternative for lemons. Um, they have alternatives for all these things and these flavors to have because citrus doesn't grow in Canada. But all these other things grow that have that same flavor profile and you can cook with it and make amazing things. And I, I think that's a great approach to say, what can you get from land and develop that? Because we've industrialized agriculture so much, we've kind of got this monoculture now and all those heirloom. As we know, I mean, I don't, everybody knows it's, but we've lost all of that and it would be nice to see us go back to that and better for the land and it's. When we hit a crisis or whatever, we're going to want that food right here. Anyway, my personal. Shtick.
It's great. Okay, well, so I think for next time, we will let George and Sarah weigh in on what their thoughts were for this section. And we will talk about economic development as well.
Okay.
And maybe we should say what the third one is going to be, because.
Is the land use one is separate or are you saying that both of those they want to talk about?
Well, so there's a land, land use is another chapter. You, you guys.
Wait, but I read the land use, I thought it was supposed to be land use and natural, it was just natural.
Yeah, that's all I was sent, does anybody have more?
Oh, George sent us both.
Oh, just because.
It was land use and natural, historic and cultural resources, that's what's been revisited.
That's right, all right, well, I was supposed to do, all right, I read this.
To the master plan.
We're supposed to do natural for this. I was, this is. I, I, I did my early reading on my next assignment.
Yeah, I just re-identified it, we might have said that last time, but.
I read, I read the minutes and it's, and then George sent me chapters, said, you got to read that, it's both.
I.
I actually have more comments on the land use one, because I, I love all the zoning stuff that was in there. But there's actually nothing about, okay, how much housing do we need? But we can talk about that later.
Yes.
I was impressed with how much of the zoning work has actually been addressed now though.
It is impressive, yes.
It's interesting when I, I spoke to Eric about this, when Amherst did their master plan. They had somebody come in with GIS and look at each lot and show what the maximum build out would be. And which lots could add based on. Where they can increase. And it, and, and I said to Eric, that would be really great to do, we don't have that GIS access and I wanted to start doing it neighborhood by neighborhood. Instead, I've been doing this drive around and say, okay, where could we add something, where could we not? And, you know, the whole garage thing, it's like there's so many abandoned boarded up garages and you have multifamily rentals, like.
Yeah.
There's your low hanging fruit, for crying out loud, get those things built. They're empty, they're empty, falling apart, they're about led paint, they're fire hazards, they're, you know, but anyway, um. So I, I was going to try and take some neighborhoods and do that build out and show, okay. This is kind of what it would look like if we do the maximum build out with our current zoning bylaws. And now this new ADU, it's a job I'm trying to do, maybe, you know, just to give it an example in time for the council meeting. But anyway. But Amherst paid a lot of money for that study and they had all the GIS stuff so they could, we don't, we don't even have, I asked Derek about the GIS act, we don't even have that. He doesn't even have that software, he's not even connected to that. So it's like, we got to get up to speed here, got to get some basic stuff. But anyway, I've. Been interesting to look at, you know, street after street, each neighborhood itself. If we only do that, it's not going to change what the city looks like, but it's going to add many units.
Well, actually.
Youth and units.
Fill in all these. Missing teeth.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we'll. That we can, we'll come back to these, to the master plan next time. But we'll talk, we'll finish talking about natural history, natural, historic and cultural resources and also talk about. We'll talk about land use instead.
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
Okay, so next time let's talk about land.
Land use doesn't, there's also a housing section, right?
There's a housing section.
Because in some ways the housing, maybe that's where the housing stuff should be. So that.
The housing chapter was written in twenty fourteen, it's, it was not updated, only these two.
These are the ones that are being.
I used to talk, that's what we're looking. Yeah, so I was kind of thinking there could be more in there about it, but since it's probably should be in that section.
It, it is in terms of land use.
Right.
But not in the detail.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We all would love to see it, yeah.
Okay, so then I think maybe we should make a note for next time. We'll finish talking about these two sections. So that Sarah and George can, can weigh in. And it should be land use and economic development, because there is no economic development section. All right. Uh, so moving on to the next discussion item, planning board discussion regarding the city's hybrid meeting rules. So George said. So we, as you've heard, there's a new thing at the top of the agenda about public comment, at the discretion of the chair. And it's our tradition that we let people talk if they come to the meeting, even if it's not a, a public hearing. So we did that today, but if it, but sometimes it is a public hearing, that's some more formal. I, I think what we need, George asked us to sort out and it's kind of been on our agenda for a little while is. Just make sure we're aware of what the city's rules are about hybrid meetings.
We can say a hybrid meeting, meaning both on Zoom and in person, what you need to do if it is hybrid.
Yeah, so they're all, they're always, planning board meetings have to be hybrid, that's the rule, according to what was passed in twenty twenty four.
And it's all posted online, on the plan.
And me, and that is really for.
And on the calendar.
For residents, it's not about, the planning board members can be on Zoom or in person, but residents can have access to all these meetings.
Correct.
That's the goal, yeah. And so.
And they're recorded, these are also.
Recorded, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So you can look at it retroactively.
So it's the rule that we have hybrid meetings, but there's still. You know, and there's situations happen where the agenda is wrong, there's ambiguity. And not every possible scenario is completely and clearly defined by this rule here. So I think what George is asking us to do is just maybe we could talk through a couple of scenarios that could happen where there's no clear answer. And have a working policy about what to do in those situations.
Even like the one where the people said they couldn't get on the meeting, but I get on the meeting and. You've been like the one where the people said they couldn't get on the meeting, but I get on the meeting and we kept going with the meeting, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so this, this rule is not, it says that the meeting has to be hybrid, but it doesn't say where the, you know, which link is supposed to be the one that actually works, just that a link has to work somewhere. And so are we okay with that? Should we, should it always be this?
It should be consistent, it should all be in one place, because the more places you put something, the more chances you have of having one out.
Calendar, the town calendars where anything is connected for the links, to access the meeting. As far as the documents that are for the meeting, that should be with the planning board's site. So you need to go to two places if you want to be prepared for the meeting. You go to the calendar, get the correct link, attend the meeting, but you go to the planning board, you know, little page on the, on the city website to get the documents for the meeting. I think that's reasonable. What's confusing about it is having attended that open meeting law, kind of hearing or training about it, was that the, the actual legal site that has to be maintained is the one that is, you know, is sort of identified to the state as the official place, and that's going to be the clerk's office. Clerk's office, that's. So the calendar is actually not the legal site, so the clerk's one has to be correct. And they said, you know, if you have multiple ones, you're going to get into a lot of trouble because you can't keep them all.
Can't keep them all.
But the calendar is the most consumer-friendly by far. You know, so that's really the one you want to work, but it's not the legal one. I don't know if it keeps the calendar.
Does the clerk keep the calendar?
Does the clerk keep the calendar? It's the one that should be, I mean, it's the one that citizens.
It's the one goes to, yeah. I, I always go to the calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's the one where.
Where is it?
Well, that should be under the purview of the responsibility of the town clerk's office, she should keep the calendar. We'll find out who does keep that calendar, because I don't know who does that.
So I don't think that it's our, so I, I don't think we're being asked to, so until it gets fixed.
Yeah.
And someone uses a link that isn't the official link, but it was a link that was made available somewhere on a different site. Because that's been the case in the past where there's been two links in two different places.
Yeah, one of them doesn't work.
One of them doesn't go to the meeting, one of them does. There's the open meeting law from the state, and then there's this ordinance from the city.
Right.
This does not address some of those things, maybe the open meeting law does, like where you're talking about the official place to put things.
It does, but it's not very satisfying, you know, because.
There's, there's, there's lots of scenarios.
But it's not what people would want. I think we're here to make a recommendation, right, that's, we discussed what we think. And like I said, the best solution is to have one spot for the link to the meeting and one spot for the doctor.
So what if we haven't made that change yet and somebody says they couldn't get into the meeting? But do we, I guess the question is, do we, like, one question George asks here is, do we, are there, are there situations where we would cancel the meeting because something isn't quite right? Whether or not it's legally mandated.
The only question I would have is if, if it's a public hearing.
Yeah.
A public hearing for sure, I would say yes.
So if people.
That's almost the only one, because if you're gonna, you're gonna, if we're already here and people are coming and they're coming to participate, then to deny their participation because the virtual one is down, doesn't seem right to me. I mean, if people are coming to a meeting, they should have.
Because the meeting's being recorded no matter what.
Yeah.
And it can be posted.
So, so if there's no public hearing, the public has no role in the proceedings.
It's at your discretion.
Rachel, Rachel wants to say something?
I don't know if you want to.
Counselor Gordon hasn't spoken and might have a, as a counselor, maybe he has a thought here.
Yeah, I don't want to speak out of turn, but we did have an EDC meeting that we did actually have to cancel, even though we had all gotten there into the room because the Zoom wasn't working. And I'm not 100% sure that we actually had to do that, but I think it's, it's worth checking with the clerk, because my understanding was that because it was posted as a hybrid meeting, the fact that we couldn't hold it as hybrid was a, a problem. So, you know, I totally understand wanting to go ahead with the meeting and I, I think it's worth double checking with the clerk's office.
We haven't actually had an instance where the hybrid didn't work. But if we had, the instance we had was the link provided didn't work, but if you just used the Zoom credentials, the meeting ID and passcode that was also on the agenda, you could get into the meeting, which is how I got into the meeting. So.
Oh, interesting. I think in that case, it seems like you were fulfilling the requirements.
Right, so.
No, actually, the links did not match and you're speaking out of order.
Who is speaking out of order?
I appreciate that. I, I think the question, the distinction is out of order. In Rachel's case, the Zoom didn't work at all. And in the case you're talking about, I was there too, the Zoom did work.
Yes.
The link was misleading, one of the links didn't work, but the meeting was, people were on the phone. It was a hybrid meeting, it just wasn't a very clean hybrid meeting.
Don't worry, we're going to have clarification on this matter from the AG, thank you.
So until we have clarification on these things, we need a, George would like us to have a policy, like, under what circumstances would we? It sounds like if the Zoom is just dysfunctional altogether, we're, we're violating the city council rule that it be a hybrid meeting, so that would be a grounds to cancel. Or if there's two links and one of them doesn't work, but one does, it's a hybrid meeting, because the Zoom is working, it's just unfortunate.
I agree.
There's confusion at the clerk's office.
Sounds like we should confirm with the clerk though.
Yeah.
That a Zoom, the Zoom link does have to be working in order to comply with the town ordinance.
Does it all available Zoom links have to be working?
Or something, just, it's worth probably confirming with the clerk.
So how do we, I feel like we talked about this many times, we've had that suggestion many times.
Yeah, can't someone talk to the clerk, the chair?
That's, I suppose I can, yeah. I guess that's my job now.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Is George in the chair anymore?
Well, not today.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so I think we.
When he becomes chair again, he can do it.
Yeah, it, it's true.
You can.
I mean, it's his issue, he cares about it, so it feels like it's a.
Yeah, and there's been.
It is an issue for everyone, I mean, we want to make sure people can.
File against me too, so I'd like to know what the.
Yeah, yeah.
The technology is going to do what it's going to, sometimes it's out of our.
There's always, I mean, just how many of us have, have, when you have Zoom meetings, someone can't get in, someone has this, you got to reset on the password. For some reason, link isn't working, why not? I don't know, it worked for me, I mean, it's just endless, you know?
Or Zoom bombing, I guess that doesn't happen anymore, thank goodness.
And I mean, a suggestion also to the council could be, update this ordinance because it doesn't cover enough contingencies.
It feels, it should be a problem in the city, though, this, like, each board and committee shouldn't have their own.
No, that's where we're being asked to come up with our own working policy, which might not be consistent.
Should be done the same way. One plan for everybody, anyone who's a Zoom meeting. I think Rachel should figure it out and tell us what they.
Okay, so I will go to.
No problem.
It should be consistent, it should be.
It probably isn't legal for us to come up with our own law.
But it's confusing, if one has, one cancels, one doesn't, it's like.
Okay, so I think I've, I've gotten a good sense of, I mean, this is a contingency edge case that we ran into. So we're going to use our best judgment in every case until there's a policy, but maybe we can ask a better question this time and get a.
Get a policy.
I have a technical question then, for things that have a deadline, a time deadline for a response from the board. If we have a glitch and we keep postponing, is that taken into account on the deadline or so?
My sense is that the democracy of the process is more important than the efficacy of the process.
No, but that could be, I don't want.
What, what how, I mean, the citizen.
That could be really problematic.
Petitions have timeframes, what else has timeframes?
Well, the, the Affordable Homes Act required communities to be compliant with the ADU rule by February 2nd or something. It wasn't even mathematically possible for places with town meeting, they didn't have enough meetings to do it. And then the states had, too bad.
Just an example, right?
So there's only, sometimes we have recourse, we could call a special meeting maybe, and other times maybe not.
But also if somebody submits for a special permit or something like that and they need an answer within a certain amount of time, or we have to provide an answer within a certain amount of time, 30 days.
Do special permits get approved or denied if you don't act a certain amount of time or?
Normally there's a statute of limitations.
30 days for special permits.
So.
90 days.
90 days.
90 days. I thought it should be changed to 631.
45 days to review, let's see.
I always thought that was a minimum, not a maximum.
Yeah.
I've seen plenty of projects get delayed because they didn't have quorum, it's not like they got to do the project, they had to wait till.
Okay, the common period is 30, that's, that's common period, that's the public.
Yeah.
That's pretty straightforward. Yeah, inspector buildings has 45 days to act on a site plan.
Pretty sure it's a special permission. I thought it was too long, I remember.
But we can ask that question.
Anyway, this, but this.
It's a type of situation where.
Try to have meetings.
Yeah, we're, we're, our job, our obligation is to help the city comply with the state law.
Right.
Are there overrides to the process or not? So I could ask that question too.
The state has us all figured out, we've just got to follow that.
And that was part of, that was one of the conditions last time, right?
Right.
We were trying to get, get the thing done. Here's the, if anyone wants to look at the policy that the city has, I have it here. Alright. So I think we've discovered that enough, get some clear answers next time hopefully. The last item is.
Community Preservation Committee?
Yeah, so Peter, Peter is on the Community Preservation Committee, he's our planning board representative, and he's just not able to make the meetings anymore.
These meetings, not able to make the CPC meetings?
The CPC meetings, yeah. And he's not, I know he's, he's got some conflicts sometimes with this meeting too, but it sounds like he's got too many. He doesn't feel like he's able to effectively represent the board at that, I believe he'd like someone to replace him. I was curious if somebody would want to.
When is it?
When do they meet?
I don't know. How often does that meet? Is it a standing meeting or is it, do they have like a little phase where they get real busy? And then they finish their work, Susan's the chair, but I think.
It's not sure, I'll see if I can figure it out.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to deal with it on if the, I mean, it doesn't, it's problematic.
Okay, and maybe there's a way to have an alternate, I mean, if, the next time Peter's at a meeting, here, we could ask him if he wants to stay involved when he can, or if he just wants to hand it over. But it's good to know that you'd be interested.
We'd like to do it.
Okay.
Let's see if they have a standing meeting. It's the Historical Society or something like that.
Community Preservation Committee. Oh, CPC, that's the, the CPA, the tax.
Right, yeah.
That's right, isn't that the?
Community Preservation Committee.
CPA.
Oh. Yes, yes, correct.
That's the extra tax that we tax ourselves.
It's the committee that handles the Community Preservation Act money.
Right, decides what to spend, I don't know, so it's an important role.
You know, they have, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to give out, something like that, maybe a little less, 15, some, some.
Yeah.
They consider four or five projects.
Right, and it can make a difference.
It's good stuff.
There's the fourth Thursday of the month at 5:30 in here. I can't do that.
So we're the first Thursday and that's the fourth Thursday. Yeah, alright, well, we can talk to them about it.
Okay, great, if you.
Yeah.
Are you interested?
I'm, I've got already too much in my brain. Next time, next time.
Alright.
You'll pass on this, you'll pass on this opportunity.
For the month, yeah.
So the next planning board meeting.
Other things I better finish up first.
June 5th.
When I'm retired.
June 5th, the first Thursday. I mean, you won't be here.
Yeah, happy birthday.
I'll be an alternate.
Thank you, so thank you alternates for.
Yes, thank you personally.
For that at least one of you.
Thank you.
I, you know, I, I, can we have a general discussion maybe when we close this meeting? No.
No, well, it depends on what it's about.
Off record, off record, okay.
We cannot.
I'll table it.
Okay.
I'll table it.
Yeah, that was another thing we've.
To discuss, what we could discuss.
Yeah.
We can't discuss anything that's on our agenda.
You can send, if you have a thought, you can send it to, supposed to send it to Eric and George. And if George can't do it, he sends it to me, I'm going to be.
Now, are we allowed to publish a piece in my turn?
Sure, fair, their personal opinion. You're just not allowed to communicate with more than one board member.
Right.
So you can't, you can't write in code in my.
No meetings, no, no deliberating outside of public shot, that I understand, not a problem with that. Yeah.
I was curious about that, so you can't even do one-on-one. You have to disclose your planning board member maybe and say that you're speaking as a. That's what pretend to do, it seems like a convention.
It's a good thing that they just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so next meeting is June 5th, you want me to adjourn?
Please.
I'm old to adjourn the meeting.
Second discussion, all favor.
Alright, okay.
Thank you guys.
Your next meeting though.
June 5th.
Okay.
June 5th, first Thursday in June.